So as a preliminary mayor, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And town staff, and when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
I understand Kristen's going to be, Kristen Grubbs, the Assistant Town Planner will be a little late tonight. Is that right?
Yep, she's on her way. She should be here soon.
Okay, thank you. For anticipated speakers, we have Emily Innes of Innes Associates. Emily?
I'm here.
Nice to see you. Thank you. So this May 3, 2023, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement to the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099US, New York, and entering meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through the local access cable channel 9 on Zoom in at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board, to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. The meeting ground rules. Before turning to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone, *6 to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with the members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so any public comment would be at the discretion of the board. But I see we do have some members of the public here, so time permitting, I would like to be able to take a public comment. In order to do so, after board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the More function next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the Raise Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name, address, and then ask a question or comment. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the Raise Hand column and again afford, well, in this case, we don't have any applicants, but afford anyone else who wishes to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant or representative. Once once again, I'm sorry, since we don't have a public hearing, we have neither of those, but would normally be afforded an opportunity to speak. And finally, note, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So turning to the agenda, the first item is the March 2023 financial report, which I will read into the record and the, I'm sorry.
A second, my mistake on that. It's the April 2023.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, my mistake.
Pick that up. The following payroll invoices have been allowed. Payroll warrants for Planning Director and Assistant Planner, PR 23-21 for the pay period ending 4/8/23, and PR 23-22 for the pay period ending 4/22/23. For Planning Board expenses, we have Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad Rental 4/21/23, Martha Taylor Employee Expense Reimbursement 4/24/2023, and Kristen Grubbs Employee Expense Reimbursement 4/4/23. For escrow accounts, we have Joseph Sawaka Engineering Peer Review for the Governors Academy, dated 4/13/23, Joseph Sawaka Engineer Peer Review for Three Newbury Port Turnpike, dated 4/4/23, and again, for Joseph Sawaka Engineering Peer Review, 105 High Road, dated 4/13/23. Okay, with that out of the way, the next item on the agenda is, we're going to hear from Emily Innes. Bring us up to date on the draft master plan. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back with you today. I think this is the third time I've met with you since we started the process and in talking with Martha. It was a good time to just update you with where we are on the master plan. So I can share my screen or I can just walk you through it. Happy to do either way. But maybe we'll start with this and then I'll turn it off when we get to certain points. So just to remind you of a few things, because I know that obviously there are people watching who are not members of the Planning Board, maybe aren't familiar with what a master plan is or a comprehensive plan. So I'm going to run through that. I'm going to talk a little bit about the process since I came on board, so 2022 and 23, where we are with the plan. You have seen the initial draft format back last year. It's very much more complete now, and I understand you have copies. And then just talk to you a little bit about the proposed schedule, how we get from here to the point at which the plan comes in front of you. So just as a reminder to people who might not be familiar with this, who may be watching this at home, master plans or comprehensive plans are enabled by Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D. Frequently, you might see this referred to just as Section 81D, and it enables the planning board of a community to do the master planning work. There are some specific required elements. Some of the names have changed a little bit in professional practice, but as stated, they are as you see here. I'll just call out that the Goals and Policy Statement often includes a vision now. Circulation is often renamed Transportation, as it is in this plan. I've seen communities call it Mobility as well. And Natural and Cultural Resources, we often call out Historic as part of that, so it's not loss. But other than that, the list of required elements is what you'll see addressed in your draft plan. And I think it's a key point to remember. First thing is that you can do more than just that. Though a lot of communities, and Newbury is one, will address issues of resiliency and sustainability. Other communities have looked at things like public health, for example, something that was just starting pre-pandemic to enter the planning world and has become more comprehensive since then. But I think it's really important for people to understand the function of a master plan, and that is, it's really giving guidance to the town about the actions the town can take over the next 10 years to address these plan elements. And so it may well be that the town is partnering with local groups, with state agencies, with the Regional Planning Agency, MVPC, but ultimately, it is a document that is intended to help guide policies for the town and investments in both time and resources. So as you review this, think of the town's role in the implementation of this plan. So in terms of the process over the last just over a year, we started off by trying to be very faithful to the work that had been done before this plan. Momentum halted, not particularly helped by the pandemic. And there had been a lot of work on the public side. There was a survey that reached a lot of people, work by the Master Plan Committee, different meetings. All of that had been gathered together in distinct chapters. And part of the challenge was to understand how much those chapters were finished and could just move forward maybe with some data updates, and how many of those chapters actually needed some additional work, and then kind of the framework to put everything together. So as part of that process, the initial part was spending a little time figuring that out, understanding what data sources needed to be tapped for the update, and then working with MVPC, who had been part of the earlier process to update the chapters that they were responsible for. They were also responsible for the maps, so having them update the maps and review the Natural Resources section. And then I filled in on the other chapters to make sure that we updated the data to the best of the available sources and bringing together the plan as a complete plan and not just individual chapters. So that's really the work that's been happening. These are the chapters of the plan. So you see the executive summary in the introduction. The just executive summary is for those who don't have the time or inclination to read the whole thing. We hope that that captures the information that they need to know, and we're looking forward to your comments on that. The introduction really calls out, you know, the planning process, what the plan is, what it's designed to achieve, and the expanded vision, goals, and actions is that forward-looking piece of what should guide the town over the next 10 years in terms of actions and probably 15 years in terms of effect. The plan elements, the existing conditions, talk about what's happening right now. Those are the portions that really needed the data updates. And it's one for each of the elements you saw, except for the goals and vision and the implementation plan. And that's because the implementation plan is separate. I'm going to show you an example. And then we've added some tools and resources just to help people, if they get excited by what they see and they want some additional data, there's some funding resources in there just so they know what, where to go for next steps. We do have a draft vision, which I have on the screen here, and we can return to. I'm just going to show you briefly what the components are, and then we can go back for the discussion. And I've also put in all of the draft goals. If you have time and wish to talk priorities tonight, we can certainly jump back. But what I want to call out is that each of those elements has a selection of goals. When you go into the plan itself, you'll see that each goal may have one or more actions associated with it, and it's those actions that get translated to the implementation plan. So I've brought all of those forward here, the draft goals for each one of the elements. And then you see, this is just one page of the implementation plan, but you have those same numbers of the goals up at the top and then the supporting actions. And then where possible, we've identified partners within the town, or if there are some that may be outside of the town that the town could partner with, those are in the Resources section. And where known from the original text, the priority. Now, one of the things we're going to do in the next step is going to help us look at what other priorities there might be in terms of thinking how that might have changed since the additional work. And that brings me to the proposed schedule. So obviously, meeting with you here tonight is part of the next steps. We're hoping that you can send us any comments that you may have by May 8 on the draft. I will work with Martha and Kristen to turn that around, and the idea is that we're going to release the draft for public comment starting on May 24. Give everybody something to do over the Memorial Day weekend. That draft will be accompanied by an online questionnaire that allows people to read the draft and then go on and input their questions. And this is where I wanted to get back to priorities, because we're going to ask the respondents to that questionnaire what their priorities are for certain goals. And the thought behind that is that the responses that we receive through that questionnaire process can be added as an appendix to this document, so that as you or as the, if it is established, there's a Recommended Master Plan Implementation Committee in there, whoever's going to be implementing the various actions will have access to those comments as an appendix that can help guide them in next steps. We'll close that public comment period on June 19. That gets me time to wrap the, start wrapping the appendix up. But I'd like to report back to you if possible on June 21 to let you know the initial response from that survey. And I forgot to mention June 12, about halfway through, we're going to have a public meeting to discuss the plan. The people who maybe aren't comfortable online will have two options. We'll have copies of the plan and the questionnaire at designated locations throughout town. We'll also have a public meeting where they can come talk to us about it. Once they've been to the public meeting, they may have something more they want to say, so we like to keep the survey, the questionnaire, open a little bit after that, so they have a chance to comment. Pull all that together, meet with you on the 21st, and then depending on how many more meetings that you want to have to discuss the plan. Again, the approval of a master plan is the Planning Board's responsibility. So I've got these dates on my calendar now, subject to your needs in terms of anything you need from me for that discussion. And with that, I will stop sharing for any questions, but if you'd like to go back to talk about any of the slides, I'm happy to jump back.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Martha, before I turn to the board members, anything you'd like to add to what Emily had to say?
No, I think she, I think she covered everything very well.
Yeah.
Yeah, as she noted, we will be providing information about the survey and how to find, how to access the survey, how to find the, the plan draft online, and also we will have copies in various locations, like the Library and Council on Aging and Town Clerk's Office.
Okay, good. Thank you. Pete, let me turn to you. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, sure. Thanks very much, Larry. First, Emily, I'm very, very happy that you've been able to participate with us in this process. Your guidance is, has been very, very helpful, and working with the work group, with Martha, Kristen, and the other members from Finance and from Select Board, has been very, very helpful. I think our schedule is realistic. I think the opportunity for public comment in a couple of different forms is really, really helpful. As you said, there was a lot of work that went into this prior to this past year, and all of that information has been maintained and updated so that we will have a vision and a plan to direct us for the future. So I appreciate the efforts and the members of the board to be able to participate this as well.
Thank you, Pete. George? You're muted, George.
No comments right now. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, Leslie, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I absolutely agree with everything Pete just said.
Very good. Thank you. Woody?
I think it's great that it's gonna, there's a finish line in the near future here. The survey that's gonna go out will be nice as well if there's anything that needs to be added or any comments or understanding, so it'll be great to have the survey and circulation people to comment, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Woody. Mary?
Emily, thank you very much for your work, and I want to just echo what Woody said in another way. I think it's important that the town understands that this document is extraordinarily important. It's not just something that's going to sit on the shelf and that we look forward in, in an energetic way, in a very, very enthusiastic way, to having the comments from the town participants, whoever wants to comment, because this is not done until we have their comments. It's not done then. And even after that, it will go through many changes as things change in the environment. So if that can be made clear when these are distributed, it looks very, as a document, it's very powerful and overwhelming. So I think the perception might be that it's a done deal. Let's make, make sure, Emily, that those things are not what is the perception, that the reality must be emphasized. Again, thank you very much. I'm very grateful to you and Martha for getting this thing moving and seeing it at a stage where we can all feel, wow, Hugh, you know, we have something to back us up. The other thing I want to ask Emily is, of all the towns that you've worked with, is Newbury different in the amount of different sections? In other words, we have three specific sections. Have you dealt with a town that has that kind of? I mean, every one of these sections, as you know, is really, really different and cool. And that's what makes this town very special. And I just wonder if you've encountered that.
I have. Actually, one of the first comprehensive plans I worked on was a Rhode Island plan. They have a different format for doing comprehensive plans, but it was the town of West Warwick, which was also a town of villages with very specific development patterns around each. I always find communities like that, like Newbury, intriguing because there's a different character depending on where you are. And in terms of your next steps, you know, Planning Board, Select Board, thinking as you move forward about those different components in each of the sort of village areas and the transitions between them, I think will be very important, you know, as you start to implement. So I'd be interested to see what the public says on that. But the idea of having these separate villages with their identities is really important in terms of New England development.
Okay. Thank you, Emily, and thanks again.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. And I'll echo what the others have said, that I can't, there's just been an enormous amount of work that has gone into this draft, and it is still a living document. It is still something that we're looking at and welcome public participation. That, that said, Martha, do we have any raised hands from members of the public that might have any questions or comments?
Might give them, we don't right now. We did previously. Might give them a minute to see. Okay. Well, Steve raised his hand and put it down again. Yep, Steve, your hand is up now. Yep.
Right. Thank you. This is Steve Manjion on 14th Street. And I was previously involved in really your efforts to develop an updated master plan, so I bring some of that history with me. One thing I'd like to reemphasize, and you mentioned it, Emily, that a master plan is guidance. It's not a binding document. My experience with working with some people that lived in Newbury Port at one time was that it was being presented as, well, it's in the master plan, as if this must be followed because it's in the master plan as opposed to being a guidance document, which is not binding on the community. I know you mentioned that initially, and I think that's a good thing, but I suspect that it's going to need to be iterated and reiterated time and again that it's not a binding document. So that's comment number one. I happen to live in the, one of the villages on Plum Island, so I'm particularly sensitive to what's going on out here in the way of development, Airbnb, vacation rental by owners, and the implications for the quality of life in the village, which is Plum Island. And it's changed quite a bit since I was involved in an earlier draft of the master plan. I don't know how it's being approached right now, but I certainly look forward to reading about how Plum Island is discussed in lieu of all the development and pressures that are occurring out there. One of the phrases, terms of art, is to say that this is an AC/EC in many parts, an area of critical environmental concern. And as an old-line environmentalist, I think it's important to look to the master plan guidance to acknowledge that when we talk about what the master plan for Plum Island would entail. So again, I look forward to reading it. The one other global point I'll make is that I just happened to tune into this to see what was on the agenda. And when I noticed the schedule that was laid out for how you'd be trying to bring this forth to the rest of the town's people, I think it's going to be very, very important to advertise this a lot ahead of time so that people have the opportunity to familiarize themselves with what's going to be in, that there is a document out there in this public comment. I mean, a lot of people, perhaps myself included, don't, you know, spend minute by minute observation of what's on the town website and what's coming. But guidance or not, it's still going to be important to give people as much opportunity as possible to pay attention and weigh in with comments. I'm trying to think of one other thing that caught my eye that may be a hot-button topic, but I'll notice in passing that in one of your, the first slides you put up, not sure there was a goal and objective or whatever, but it talked about, you know, bringing the town hall back to High Road. Well, that is certainly a hot-button political topic in the town. It may be clarified a little bit more by the May elections, but it would still require a second town meeting. But let me back off. If on May 8 or 9, the town approves spending money for the, a new town hall on High Road, it would still require another town meeting, since the first one, it was defeated, to bring it back. So you might want to be writing things up with a little bit of flexibility, given that with your scheduled rollout in May and June, the decision is not going to be finalized unless it's voted down in May. But if it's voted up, then it's still going to be uncertain and perhaps inappropriate for a master plan. If you'll forgive me, I wrote down a few things, but I was trying to do it as you were making your presentation. So with the chairman's indulgence, I may like to come back on if someone else chooses to speak, but if that's all I have, I understand. So let me pass the baton back to the chair, and thank you for the chance to comment.
All right. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate your comments. Martha, does anyone else wish to be heard?
Not seeing any hands.
Then I'll go back to the board members one last time. Does anyone else have any questions or comments since you were given the opportunity to speak?
Oh, Larry?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, Mary, you go ahead. I'll follow you.
Um, I think Steve made a good point, and I noticed it too. Kind of jumped out at me, at me. The the issue of the town hall, that's got to be worded very, very carefully, if at all. I'm not sure how that figures into a master plan, but it needs to be self-pedaled. People have made their views clear. I wouldn't want a master plan to be heave-hoed because they feel that they weren't heard. So now we're telling them they're going to be heard, and oops, they're not heard. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll, there'll, there'll probably be comments along the same lines of Mr. Man Jones. And I'm sure we, you know, some language can be drafted that would satisfy everyone on that point. We understand that it is a matter of great debate in town. I didn't particularly read this as taking a position, for example, on building a new building or rehabbing the old building, but I'm sure we can deal with that, and it's probably something that they are going to hear about when we complete the survey results. Pete, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna circle back. Martha, I'm sorry, Emily, the date that you're looking for, comments from our board is going to be wrapping up by the end of this week?
May 8.
May 8. Okay, so we have, we have five days, folks, to really dig through it. It's, it's May eighth. Okay, so we have we have five days, uh, folks to really uh dig through it. It um, it's it's uh. It's a good read. Um, but the best that we uh know, if we uh uh chisel at a little bit of, can I say chisel? Uh, if we work at it a a little bit at a time, uh, that's what I find is most beneficial.
Yeah, okay, very good.
If I just might add to that, um, I think uh Martha, myself, Chris, and a couple of others are looking with eagle eyes to catch the inevitable typos that slip through. So. I would not um worry about, I mean, if you see one, call it out, obviously, but I wouldn't focus on that. It's really the um, exactly the things that have just been brought up, the 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 tone. Uh, this document had multiple authors, and while I tried to, you know, coalesce them, so it sounded like one voice with the amount of text in there, that can always slip. The tone, anything like the town hall that doesn't ring as true today as it might have done in twenty sixteen. Um, again, we try to, I think the idea of a flexible document, a living document is a really important thing to reiterate. But at some point, it has to be a document that then gets approved and moved forward with. And so we have to make a dividing line. Understanding, uh, as I found out sadly with one document that a month after uh we uh, um, the planning board signed off on it. Twelve of the links of resources broke, so. Um, but to that point, looking for those things that don't ring true, looking for the the shifts in tone. Um, look, your own priorities as you review it would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, there there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of information in this document. Um, and uh, much of which I will be honest with you, I I don't always completely understand. But it seems to me that the real heart of the document, Emily, and I'll ask if you agree or disagree, is really the the vision statement and the goals.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I think, uh, and I know that's that's what I'm going to uh focus on because I I think um. Uh, it's probably where I uh couldn't better understand the, you know, put the entire document in into focus.
That would be.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry.
That would be a great help.
Um, Martha, I see Steve Man Jones hand up again, so.
Yes.
I guess he's found his notes, Steve.
Steve, you're muted.
So, sorry, Mr. Chair, I needed to unmute, but thank you for the chance to uh. Make this comment, and I haven't found all of my notes, but um, thi- this may be something to ask. Martha and the planning board, as well as Emily, to take a look at if they haven't, because last I heard I'm talking about a draft document. Um. Year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, uh, the state funded a study that involved both Newbury Port and Newbury on surprise Plum Island, where I'm always concerned. Talking about, among other things, sea level rise, resiliency, what the future might be looking like on the island. And it showed some projections about how the Plum Island Turnpike, for instance, might be underwater very commonly during tidal cycles, never mind a storm surge cycles. And in addition, that could affect some of the other properties uh. Beyond the Plum Island Turnpike. As far as I know, that document was not finalized, and I. Though I was looking for it during the interim, Mr. Chair, I couldn't dig it out of my notes here. But it may have some relevancy. To the master plan, and I guess I would encourage you to ask Emily to. You know, dig it out and take a look at it because uh it got a lot of input from Newbury Port as well as Newbury President for this project study. And if I'm being somewhat uh obscure, I apologize. If I can dig it out later, I'd certainly be happy to uh. Call it your attention, but I suspect that Martha may have access to it as well. And again, it may play into not play into, but it may uh be significant for thinking about the master plan as it applies to Plum Island. So with that, I thank you again, Mr. Chair. Unless you have a question.
Uh, no, I I don't. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Actually, Steve, a a lot of that is in the in the document and embedded within it. So the data that you're referring to is there. And it's referenced, and you're 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 raising very, very good points and the very selling points, especially for the village of Plum Island. So um, it is in the document. Um, and um, it uh, Emily uh has has revised it and updated it. Uh, so um the your concerns are are well noted and are and are being addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Martha, unless there's anything else you want to add or any of the other members want to add, I guess we can let Emily go for the night. And move on.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think just as Emily mentioned, I think the last step will be adoption of the plan by the planning board. So. Um. I don't know whether you want to talk about potential dates for that right now. One of one of one of the dates possibly could be July fifth, but that's after July fourth. Um, or if we want to revisit that at a later date.
Yeah, um, probably. I I don't know what folks um. Vacation plans are around the fourth. I know I'm going to be out of state um in in a place where um. Um. Uh, uh, connectivity make might be an issue. Um, maybe we can revisit that later, Martha, unless there's some uh, some real need to to pick a date tonight.
No, I think that's fine. And Emily, you're holding both of those states right now, right? So.
I am holding, yes, I'm holding June twenty first, and then the two dates in July are on my calendar now.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Emily. Okay. Well, thank you again, and we really appreciate all the work that's been done on this. So I guess we can move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is. Uh, discussion of potential zoning amendments and other projects. Um, so the first item on the agenda is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing. Um. Martha, I think we're pretty well, uh, I I know some while back you come up with a calendar, and I think we're on track and on course on this uh at this point, are we not?
We are. Again, just to remind everybody, we we are aiming for um next year's annual town meeting, twenty twenty four um for the to propose the zoning for town meeting. Um. Knowing we have until December thirty first of twenty twenty five, but. We felt that it would be important to get it uh, get it before town meeting. Um, we're in the process now of um submitting an application to Mass Housing Partnership for technical assistance. Um. And MBPC may or may not be the consultant for that, but they also provide services. In terms of of um. Looking, looking at the the districts, uh determining density. Um, helping us with the draft, uh draft zoning. Um. And some. Limited public outreach uh to the boards. And that kind of thing, so. And there's a a compliance tool that Mass Housing um or DHCD has put together. That uh they'll help us with. There are a lot of information that gets plugged into that that helps determine the districts.
Very good, yeah. And and I'm I'm happy to say that and it um and it's been led by you, Martha, that we are again, up to date with all our reporting requirements and and plan implementations so far that will uh uh for the state. And I note that uh I've seen recent uh news articles that the state is actually starting to push back in the form of uh refusing funding to some communities that are not uh doing what they need to do in this regard. Um. So I think that's great. Uh, we're in good shape. And I think really the next big thing, and I think you just uh spoke to this, Martha, is really determining uh what areas, what zoning, what areas would be zoned for the multifamily housing. So. Pretty much where we're at.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let me turn to the other board members, see if there are any other questions. Pete, do you have uh, you have any questions?
No, I I think your comment about us being on target is great. Um, uh, you know, this is something that will require a lot of education and discussion uh with a town membership so that they understand that, you know, we're not mandating anything. We're just trying to allow for our zoning. It's not saying that this is going to happen. Uh, we're just trying to identify the parcels uh within our community that are most appropriate. Uh, so again, this is a discussion, a lot of good education will be taking place in in the future.
Very good. Thanks, Pete. George, anything you'd like to add?
Peter, thank you for the good comments. I have no comments myself.
All right, thank you, George. Uh, Leslie?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay, Woody?
No, um, I have no comments at this time either.
Okay, and Mary?
No, I don't. I.
Okay. Thanks, Martha. So unless there's anything else you want to add, I guess we can move on to the next item. Oh, wait a minute, I see some hands up there.
Yep, two hands. Uh, Steve mentioned first and then Pam Wolf.
Okay, uh, Steve? Uh, you're muted, Steve.
So thanks again, Mr. Chairman. And again, this is Steve Manchin on Fourteenth Street. I too have been following some of the discussion about this issue on a uh blog called The Commonwealth. Which has discussed it, and. I think, you know, Peter just made some nice points as well. One thing that always has me scratching my head, and maybe we can be prepared to address it in the future. Is that the state has said that there will be penalties associated with not adopting the zoning changes that they propose, and this could have uh caused the loss of the ability for a town or city to get grant money from the state. When I read that, I said, well, that's interesting, but how much money are we talking? Is it a small amount of money? Is it millions of dollars? Is it? You you know, a few tens of hundreds of dollars? And I think that when it comes time to vote on these changes, it'll be important to let the people know how much money is at stake by adopting or not adopting the changes uh that are inherent in these requirements that have been put on us by the state. And it's just a comment about trying to. My comment is really meant to help. Get the proposal through the system rather than having people asking at the last minute. What gives? So with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh. Next, we have.
Uh, Pam Wolf.
Uh, you're muted, Pam.
Hello. My name is Pam Wolf, and I live at sixteen Whittington Street. And um. This is a vague question because I'm not sure where this issue fits into the timing of the whole process. But, you know, I'm aware that um that towns can build into um the. Their language um. Up to ten percent affordable housing. And it could be less than that. But at what point? Um, you know, will there be discussion about the possibility of having that type of language, you know, the pros and cons and a debate and discussion around. Um, going up to a ten percent. Is that, is that at a later stage, or is that stage already been passed?
Um. Well, I'll try to answer that. Martha, you jump in here if I don't get it right. Uh, but the the ten percent affordable housing requirements you're talking about has to do with forty B projects.
Yeah, this is. This is, this is different within, oh, Marcy, I'm sorry, uh, I'll be quiet.
No, okay, no, within the MBK communities, um, the the legislation didn't originally address affordable housing at all. And that came up during the comment period. So the most recent guidelines are that a community can require up to ten percent of affordable housing, I think at at eighty percent of um area median income. Um, and could also actually allow up to twenty percent under circum certain circumstances. So that's different from the um affordable housing, the forty B requirement. And to answer your question, Pam, I think that would really come up as we're drafting the um, the zoning. And whether we have a separate inclusionary zoning bylaw that goes hand in hand with this, or whether it gets in in integrated into the zoning, I don't know yet.
So I think it's important to um keep that peace in mind. To keep this group aware of it as a possibility to be witnessing how it's addressed in other towns, if other towns are a few steps ahead of us. Um. Because it would be an opportunity to to, and of course, we don't know if we can lure developers here at all to do any of this, but if we can to say, okay, but it needs to have ten percent affordable housing. Or twenty, about the twenty, but I I just really want to um. Make sure that's in the forefront of everybody's minds. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else?
Hmm, no. Not seeing anybody.
Uh, Martha, well, again, I'll reiterate, I'm happy to report that uh we're, you know. On track with this, and um unless there's anything else you'd like to discuss in this, Martha, I guess we can move on to the affordable housing uh. Bylaws uh proposed by our discussion on proposed affordable housing bylaws, particularly inclusionary zoning and the uh establishment of an affordable housing trust.
Right. I guess the only thing on on the MBTA community that's going to be Lexington has already adopted it. They were the first. So it's going to be very interesting, I think, to actually see, see the the bylaws or ordinances, well, especially bylaws for towns. Um, as these are adopted to see how they've been addressing some of the um, you know, the affordable housing. Um, considerations and other things. And Pam has her hand up again.
Okay.
Okay, um. Is this group um participating in um, there's uh, I I don't know the name, and perhaps you do, Martha, but there's um some type of statewide um group that's um organizing communities, MBTA communities, um including by size. Um, and they're working on um, you know, how to do community education and outreach and build support, et cetera. And I don't know if we're participating or connecting connected with that. Or not. And I'm blank on the name.
That may be Chappa, and I think Kristen, um, I think Kristen's had some conversations about that.
Chap is part, that is part of that group, yes.
Um, yeah, hi, Pam. This is Kristen. I look forward to meeting you, not on Zoom.
Yes, thank you.
But I, yeah, so um Lily Link, who's um outreach manager at um Chappa, which is the Citizens Housing. I forgot what it stands for, Association. Um, statewide advocacy group for housing initiatives. Um, presented at the most recent MVPC, or actually two meetings ago for the planners group in the region. And as you say, there is um, it's sort of, it's a voluntary opportunity to work with them, get their expertise around outreach and education, and um also um. As you're saying, I think their effort is to bundle communities of like size and like characteristics in terms of population, in terms of um, you know, rural, suburban, urban. So I've talked with Lily. We haven't officially um sort of signed Newbury up to be a part of that, but it's a rolling process. And I think that's one of the pieces that Martha and I have talked about is is sort of next. So along with working on the technical pieces of the zoning, there's this sort of integrated um. You know, strategic discussion that we can include um townspeople and residents, um and certainly planning board members and um sort of developing the process as we lead up to the town meeting where the zoning would be presented. So. Um, so it's, there are a lot of resources from the state, and I think we're um, we're just, you know, on the brink of actually kicking a lot of that off. So. Think it'll be a good process.
Great, thank you. Um.
Jack, Jack Rebicki has his hand up.
Okay, Jack?
Good evening, uh, everyone. Thank you very much uh for uh, well, uh, for having me. Um, I'm Jack Rebicki. I live on Larkin Road in Byfield. Um. As a general question, I I direct it to you, Martha, or anyone on the board who's familiar. In the great scheme of things. The Little Transit Village that was voted down a long time ago, the scope and breadth of that development, Martha. In relation to the forthcoming possibilities in to be compliant with the mandates being discussed here. How much would the Little River Village? Um, you know, just not speculating, but just so to use, no, would that be a compliant development under the terms of what the state is mandating? Um. For largest possibilities under the circumstances, if I'm making myself clear. I just know that Little River was a big development, a lot of great work was brought there, and there's just a lot of housing, retail. There's a lot of components to me that would be similar to what's being discussed now, but under MBTA initiatives. And I ask uh for any correlation you can make for uh just a citizen that's curious.
Uh, Jackie. Jackie broke up a little bit, but I think I got the gist of what you were asking. So the village at Little River was proposed as a forty R district, and some communities can propose their multifamily housing districts as forty R. In that case, the village at Little River was a mix, basically a mixed use community with different types of housing apartments and townhouses, condos, as well as as some retail and commercial development. The MBTA communities really is specifically talking about housing. We could look at mixed use as part of it. It really depends on what areas or what districts we choose within town. In terms of scale, the revised guide, originally, the guidelines were requiring that we zone to allow seven hundred and fifty units at fifteen units per acre. The revised guidelines now require us to zone for a hundred and fifty-four units, still at fifteen units an acre. And if you think in terms of sort of scale of that, and they don't all have to be in the same place, the scale of that, I think Coldwell Farm is about sixty-six units. So in terms of the number of units, we're looking at something that's about two and a half times that size, you know, potentially split between different locations in town. So, and again, we could, if it seems appropriate in certain districts, like the Business and Light Industrial District or others, you know, it might be appropriate to look at mixed, mixed use. But the scale, scale would not be as big as what the village at Little River was, was planned for. So does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry about the whatever my microphone is doing. Yeah, it does. I was bringing it. Yes, the mixed use component is very much, thank you for addressing that possibility within. But the hundred and fifty units that you mentioned, I think there was even more than that as part of the Little River. And that's why, right, you know, so I, I think it was probably close to the two hundred and fifty or so total. There was mixed condos, apartments. So I think over the thirty acres of that proposed development, the moment, there was a lot, you know, there's although I know that solar farm is out there now, you know, et cetera, but the largesse of it near the train station, as is being demonstrated by Newbury Port on the other side. I only say that that's sort of a template in motion for what is possible on our side, because we had a bridge connecting over there for that transit village. And I just think it's possible that if two hundred and fifty units were possibly, were very possible in two thousand and six, I can't imagine why in two thousand and twenty-three, two hundred and fifty wouldn't also be possible for private developers under certain circumstances, up and down that particular closeness to Route One. And I just asked the board to be very cognizant of that, because we've done a lot of work towards this enlarges and smallness that perhaps can be incorporated into the thought process to protect ourselves in a proper way from from over compliance, shall we say, for all the right reasons. And that, that's in, that would be inclusive of addressing forty B in those units, should there be that amount, because perhaps we moved it up to twenty percent, we could move the needle throughout the town, because I believe as a town, Martha, what are we at, three percent or four percent, if that, maybe?
Yeah, three point one. And once the, with the new census numbers, it'll probably actually go down a little bit.
Right. So there's opportunity here to build some of that in. And I look forward to the drafts and everything. And thank you for giving me the time. And always thank you for the good works. I look forward to the master plan and all of that encompasses as well. That's a, that's a great thing to come forward as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jack. Okay. Martha, or for any of the board members, anything else you want to discuss before we move on to affordable housing? No, hearing none. Martha, maybe you could just kind of remind us of the history of where we've been with this. It's been a while since we looked at it.
Yeah, it's been quite some time without our, on our list. And Emily Noble, as you may recall, did some, some research on this previously to see what other, other communities were doing in terms of inclusionary zoning. Both, and there, there were a number of questions, like what, what's the trigger? You know, how many units before you actually require that there be some affordable units? Is it four? Is it ten? And the other thing that we were starting to look at was if if you are going to allow a developer to make a payment in lieu of creating an affordable unit, we have no mechanism right now to accept those payment in lieu, so that that gets to the Affordable Housing Trust. So we'd originally thought that this might be a relatively easy, easy thing to start to develop, but as we looked at it, it became more complicated, and we kind of put it put it aside. It is something that I think will be appropriate to look at as we're developing the MBTA communities zoning so that we can, you know, have you know, either, either have a kind of a companion inclusionary zoning piece or build that into the zoning for the MBTA communities.
Yeah, they seem to go hand in hand. But, but you're right, as I understand it, with the inclusionary zoning, you can require a developer to, of projects of a certain size to designate so many affordable units, or a lot of communities permit a cash payment in lieu of that, which can be used by the municipality for affordable housing. But as you said, you need the the entity, the vehicle, the mechanism, whatever it is to handle that money, which would be the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't know if, if, I'll just throw out this thought out. I don't know if any of the members would want to take any particular, and I'm sure you're all interested in it, but if there's anyone would, who would have an interest in working closely with the planning department on this, I'd suggest you, you know, speak with Martha about that, because I think that might be helpful. I don't think we're at the, at the point where we necessarily would want to appoint a subcommittee at this point, but that's something we can think about in the future, too.
And we may have some resources. I think Wes Newberry went through this process a year or so ago. Middleton also fairly recently adopted a, an Affordable Housing Trust, I think so. If it would be helpful to the board, we might actually be able to bring in some people who have gone through this experience to kind of share it with us and sort of give us pointers and pitfalls and that kind of thing.
I think that'd be great. But but I, I think, just, well, I, I think we're, we're gonna see the state being more and more aggressive about urging communities, for lack of a better term, you know, to address the the housing issues, especially affordable housing. So I think it's something that needs to be, certainly needs to be addressed. Pete, you look like you had something you want to say.
Oh, I do. You know, I think this, this would be the vehicle to help us not incentivize, let developers know that if they want to develop in this town, they have to help in the burden of this affordable housing, because every time we have a conversation with the developer, of course, they nod their head, they tell us they'd like to help us. And then they build these beautiful homes, but it doesn't address our affordable needs for the community. So if this, this instrument was in place, it would help assist us to facilitate that process. And the trust I think is also a very important tools. We've talked about it. I think it's a good time to really put some energy into trying to bring it to fruition.
Good. Thank you. George, anything you want to add?
No comment.
No. Leslie?
No comment.
Woody, anything you'd like to add?
No, just other than a mechanism to help with the increase of percentage of affordable housing would be great.
And Mary?
No, I have no comments. Thank you, Larry.
Hey, Martha, anything else you want to discuss before we move on?
I don't. Pam has her hand up.
Okay, Pam, please go ahead.
Muted.
Oh, yeah, you are.
There you go. Thank you. So there's a group called Affordable Housing in Massachusetts. And I think they're the group that has a lot of the implementation grant for providing technical assistance for the MBTA communities. And, you know, that's the group that I was thinking of earlier, that Chappa is part of. And even though it's MBTA communities, that includes embracing things like the, starting a trust and, and, you know, inclusionary zoning, all that, because it's so tied together. But so I have a name, so maybe Martha, I can contact you afterwards. Because I have a name and number for a woman who I talked to who's involved with that. And for example, she was gonna send me mature area incentives for developers to include up to twenty percent affordable housing. And you probably know all this already and know every incentive there is, but just in case this is of use, could I send that information on to you? And maybe give a name, and, and it might be somebody you're already involved in working with, but.
No, that would be great, Pam, if you'd do that, just, you know, in an email would be perfect.
Okay, okay. And, and just from the building community support, you know, I think there are several people in the community who actually would, when the time is right, would be very interested in kind of organizing support for this. I don't know if y'all remember the Citizens for Newbury that worked in sort of the village at Little River, but that was a very, very well organized, broad effort. And, you know, it influenced, we didn't win, but what the, what the heck, we came close.
It was close. Yeah, no, that would be great. Thanks, Pam.
Larry? Yes. Yeah, I have to bow out right now, but I will say good night to everybody. Okay, George, thank you.
George.
Good night.
Thanks, George. Good night.
Thank you, George.
Okay, do we want to move on to wireless communications?
Yeah, unless there's anything anybody else wants to say.
Okay. So well, Martha, why don't you give us a recap of it?
Okay. Well, as you all remember, we worked with David Maxon to update our wireless communications bylaw. And that was adopted unanimously at town meeting, which was wonderful, but there was a little bit of homework still left to do. One was through his, the drive-throughs that they did, they did identify some areas in town which have very poor coverage. There were a couple of suggestions made by David during during that process. So it was suggested that we take another look at our, our tower district to determine where we might expand that. I think a couple of areas that were suggested, one, one is actually the, the parcel that the Highway Barn is on High Road would be a good spot, just in terms of coverage and also something around Triton. So it seems appropriate to move forward with that. And the other thing was, we do address small cell facilities in the bylaw, but we have not actually developed yet the small cell regulations that need to go along with them.
Right. And there would, for the small cell, there would be two sets of regulations, right, Martha? One would be for small cells located within the public right of way, which would be a select board permit. And then the other, outside the right of way is a planning board permit.
Right, it's a grant of location by the right, in the right way, yeah.
So I, perhaps you know, we could address the small cell regulations by just looking at what some other communities have done.
Right. And we do have, we have a model from Burlington, what they did, they're you know, it's not apples to apples with us, they're a much bigger community, but that might be a point to start. Because I think David and Lisa Mead both provided that language to us.
Okay. How, just focusing on that, then, how would you like to proceed at this point? Would, would, I mean, I could work with you if you'd like to, to put some language together, maybe to bring before the board, or perhaps even at some point, a work session with town council.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe starting with a draft, developing a draft of our own, and then running that by town council or having a work session with her, and then bringing it to the board might be the way to go.
Yeah. Well, I'd, I'd be happy to work with you on that, unless there's another member here who would like to take an interest in that and, and work with Martha to, to come up with some language. No, seeing nothing, it's me and you.
I think nobody wants to work with Martha.
What's that?
Nobody wants to work with Martha.
Thank you, Larry.
Hardly.
Okay. And as far as the the additional locations for the towers, I, I, I don't quite know how to address that. Well, I suppose I, I wonder if if the, I, I could, I can see issues with both, both of the locations that have been identified. I wonder if there's any way that the small cell towers, or the small cell facilities, I guess maybe is the better term, could help to plug those gaps in coverage. Do we have any sense of that, Martha?
I don't, but I think that might be a good question to run by David Maxon and see if he can, you know, give us some guidance on that, because certainly the technology is changing all the time.
Yeah.
And fill some of those gaps with small cells, opposed to building more towers that that might be preferable.
Well, the DPW, and I, I only know this because you told me, but the DPW property, I understand that it, it doesn't have the, the size to what's the term I'm looking for, the fall radius?
The fall zone.
Fall zone for the tower. And with everything that's going on at, at the Triton campus, you know, they're looking at a new school. I don't know if even assuming that, that the administration would be open to, to placing a cell tower there. I don't know if, if we could even know where that would be at this point.
It might be worth, I mean, I'd be happy to have a discussion with the superintendent about that, because they do also own a parcel on the other side of Elm Street. And, you know, maybe with, within that whole campus, there could be a spot that, that could be appropriate.
That'd be great. It certainly, it wouldn't hurt to approach them with it anyway. See what sort of response you get.
And could I say something, Larry?
Sure.
The small pool facilities that we would discuss back with Matt, David Maxim, would also help on Palm Island, too, because Palm Island has issues as well as putting a big tower down there. So the repeated walls would help down Palm Island, too, with beachgoers and otherwise for safety reasons. So.
Right. I think if I recall correctly, Verizon was actually interested in putting one down in the, in the center, but you know, at that, at that time, our, our bylaw didn't really, you know, didn't really cover that particularly. So with the changes that we made, I think that certainly could be a good possibility.
Yeah, good point, Woody. Thank you. Okay. Anything further on this, Pete? Do you have anything you want to add?
I'm good, thanks.
No. Leslie?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Woody? Got your comments. Mary, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
So Martha, I guess you and I will try to put our heads together on some of this stuff and see if we can see what we can do. Should we move on to lot dimensions, the next item on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. I know we looked at this pretty hard a couple of years ago and didn't really come up with, with any any good solutions. And I'd be lying to you if I told you I was sitting here with a good solution now, so. And Martha, I'm, I'm gonna put it back on you. I'm sorry, but any ideas?
Well, I've seen a couple of things since, since we went through that exercise. I think it would be worth, and actually Kristen has received some information from the planner in Groveland on research that she did on lot dimensions. So I think, and we can also put something out on the, on the mass planners list, sir. So I think it would be worth going through the exercise again. As we've seen, even, even recently, we've seen a couple of you know, conventional subdivision plans or yield plans that really take advantage of the fact that we don't have any sort of minimum lot with requirements and that kind of thing. So they're, they're getting very creative. But ending up in, you know, in, in a, in a layout that really is less, way less than optimal.
No, I agree with you. We keep saying these jigsaw puzzle type of development plans and No, I agree with you. We keep saying these jigsaw puzzle type of, uh, development plans and um, yeah, we could certainly, um, could certainly use some attentions, no question about that.
So I think, um, I think it would be worthwhile if, if, um, you know, Kristen and I can gather some more information, um, you know, look at what Groveland did and put a query out and see what, what we can get, and then bring some, some thoughts back to the board that we can discuss.
Be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha.
Uh, before we move on, Pete, anything?
No, thank you.
Leslie, any, anything further?
No, thank you.
Uh, Woody, anything further?
No, no.
Uh, Mary, anything further?
Nothing. Thanks, Larry.
Can I bounce back, Larry?
I'm sorry?
So, you know, I think this is important to, to facilitate. It's not to limit development, it's just to make sure that it happens in an appropriate manner. I think that's the important thing to, to carry through as we look at this.
Oh, you're absolutely right. You know, it, it, it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's not subdivision prohibition, it's subdivision control, and, and, uh, it's, you know, to see that any growth and any new developments are done responsibly and, and a manner that's gonna work. You know, not, not only for the community, but for the individual homeowners as well. So. Um, great. So, um, Martha, Kristen, anything else before we move on, move off of this subject?
No, I guess, from my point of view, I guess my only other question is the, these are the things that we were working on before, and, um, you know, just to the board members, if there's any, anything else that's been on your mind that you think, um, this would be a good time to start addressing. Or if, if out of all of these, there are any that seem to be particularly high priority. To my mind, I guess they're all sort of high priority. But.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so I guess we'll move on, and I don't have anything under old business, so planners report, Martha?
Um, don't really have too much tonight. Um, as I said before, we are starting to, um, apply for the grant for the technical assistance for MBTA communities and get that going. Um, I've mentioned previously that we're working on the housing, housing production plan with, um, uh, MVPC, and we're doing some initial work with them, and then that will be coming to the board as a kind of the stakeholder committee. Um, and the housing, um, I'm sorry, the hazard mitigation plan is, is, uh, is in progress, so there, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on right now, which is all good, good planning stuff that kind of goes hand in hand with the master plan. And, uh, one of the notes that, that Emily has included in the master plan is, is, uh, just the point that these planning efforts are going on right now, and, you know, should be kind of incorporated by reference into the plan when they're done. You know, and there may be some goals and actions and priorities in those that are more current and, you know, supersede what we have right now. It's, it really, all of this is a living document, and this is constantly, you know, needs to be updated and kept current.
Good, great. Thank you, Martha. Um, I guess we can turn to liaison reports, then, uh, select board, Leslie?
Well, the select board was town meeting, so that, uh, they didn't have a particular meeting of their own. It, it was Tuesday evening, and it was, they sat at the board just for town meeting. So not, not much to report there.
Okay. Thank you. Um, for the ZBA, I don't have much to report either. Their last, uh, meeting was on, um, April twentieth, and they did approve a special permit for an accessory apartment for one seventy-seven Middle Road. There was also an application for an accessory apartment at two twenty-nine High Road, but that was withdrawn without prejudice. And that's all I have. So conservation, Pete?
Uh, conservation met last night, um, one seventy Orchard, uh, uh, came for modification, uh, uh, kind of following in line with our discussion, uh, with the applicant regarding agricultural, uh, continuation usage. On the, the request was to have an access for an agricultural path, uh, um, within the, uh, within the, uh, plan, and, because it was a, uh, uh, air concern or resource, and that was passed. Um, something that was also was of, uh, interest, interest, um, was there was discussion about, uh, an applicant that wanted to bury a tank, uh, propane tank out on the island, um, in, in an area of concern with regards to, uh, flooding velocity. Um, so that was an interesting discussion, and I think conservation is gonna be looking, uh, more to that, as to what the, what the long-term position would be.
What sort of?
Uh, propane tank, um, yeah, and so it was buried in a propane tank on the island. Um, apparently it's, it's happened in the past, but conservation, you know, the board, all, all members were very, you know, expressed concern with regards to it. So there'll be some more discussion on that going, going forward, so.
Very good. Thank you. And Martha, MVPC?
Uh, let's see, MVPC, um, we did have the, the, um, commissioners meeting on the twentieth, that was pretty much, um, just, uh, regular, regular business. There were no special presentations that day. And the planners meeting was last week. There was, uh, an overview of the MVPC Regional Energy Planning Assistance Program. Um, they've done, actually, uh, they've done an analysis of, uh, regional, um, electric vehicle charging stations, um, and are in the process of mapping, mapping that. And, uh, they had a guest speaker talking about clean ener- energy, uh, greenhouse gas inventories and municipal climate action plans. Uh, talked about MBTA communities and grant opportunities. And, uh, those were the main, those are the main topics.
Thank you. All right, uh, well, our last item on the agenda are the planning board meeting minutes from April nineteenth. Uh, has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Pete, any, uh?
No concerns.
Uh, Leslie, any concerns?
No.
No, Woody?
None.
Mary?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, I have none either, um, so there, and I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, um, as drafted.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, you're, you're in agreement?
I am. Thank you.
I vote yes as well, so, um, the motion passes, um, uh, four zero. All right, well, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
You're in agreement? I vote yes as well, so the motion passes. Thank you all, and, um, see you soon.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Martha.
Night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martha.